Either way, we're.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Not like I got partial wall.
Well, I mean, just talking about the last week.
We're working on.
Not more.
The partial wall is over there on how we buy. I don't know. It's.
Yeah.
I'm using it. Okay. We did this tomorrow. It's pretty much fifteen hundred three dollars.
It's really good.
I was gonna say.
Very.
One extra.
Yeah.
It's explicit.
Maybe I'll make him come here.
You're sorry? Yeah.
Megan.
Megan.
Yes, good?
Yep.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Oviedo City Council Chambers. If everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence. I would like to call our meeting to order. It is October sixth, twenty twenty five, at approximately six thirty P. M., and we have all members of council present. We do not have any ceremonial items, so we will move on to the approval of the minutes. What is the pleasure of council?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from August eighteenth, twenty twenty five, regular session, and August twenty fifth, twenty twenty five, special session.
Is there a second?
Second. And also friendly amendment to include the work session minutes.
Oh, sure. Does that go with you?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against? The motion carries. We will move on to our public comment section. I do not have any written requests to speak. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council at this time? Hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of council?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. I will ask the clerk to call the roll.
Motioner, Mayor Megan Sladek.
Aye.
Seconder, Councilmember Jeff Bodiford.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Natalie Tuchert.
Aye.
Councilmember Keith Britton.
Aye.
Councilmember Alan Ott.
Aye.
The motion carries. We do not have any public hearings, first reading of ordinances, so we will move on to item number ten, which is a discussion item for the proposed right-of-way vacation. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kelly, if you could pull up that map. Thank you. This is a request for council to consider vacation or give us direction regarding vacation of the right-of-way. That is shown in on the map there, not what there's another map I will show you, but this is the right-of-way as it currently is. It's approximately twenty-three point five to twenty-four feet wide. It extends from Franklin Street there in the south up to Geneva Drive in the north, and it's between those two properties there. If we could get out to the next page. Our the Code of Ordnances, chapter forty-two, governs vacations of right-of-way. And vacations can be requested by property owners. It can be requested by city council. It can be requested by the city manager as well. They are not considered quasi-judicial actions, and there the chapter forty-two has a set of criteria that the when there is a request for a vacation that the staff takes a look at. We look at whether there's a public purpose. Is it consistent with the conference of plan? Does it deny legal access to anyone? Is there any action on public safety? Any action on any impact to pedestrians or vehicular traffic? Does it affect any public services like utilities? A lot of times when we get requests to vacate right-of-ways, there will be telephone lines in there, cable lines in there, water sewer lines, and so we will reserve easements over those anytime that we have that. We took a look at this. If you remember, Mayor Sladek asked us if the council would be interested in vacating this right-of-way on September the fourth. The consensus of council was to bring it back as a discussion, so that's why we're here tonight is to have the have that discussion. And staff took a look at it as well. We looked at the right-of-way, and one of the concerns that we had was that if we vacated the entire right-of-way, we had a concern about access, public access to lot thirty-four A there. So that's one of the reasons why we're recommending, if you do decide to give us direction to vacate the right-of-way, that we only vacate the south hundred and seven feet, and that would be the purple area there. The triangular part up there in the north would remain as public right-of-way. That would give lot thirty-four A approximately twenty-four feet of access to a public right-of-way, which is meets the Land Development Code minimum twenty-foot frontage requirement. So it would not make lot thirty-four A a non-conforming lot. One of the things that we did look at is that we we did determine in our initial analysis that this right-of-way does not have a public purpose. We haven't we haven't been able to determine it. It was a very old plat, and probably at one time Franklin Street may have turned to the north. We're not really sure. There's no we have not. We have yet to locate any public utilities there. In this configuration, we do not deny access, public access to private property. We do not see any safety concerns there as well as any impact to municipal services. Tonight, we're asking for council direction as to whether or not to vacate what we would recommend, the purple area on the on the wall there that that south hundred and seven feet of the right-of-way.
Thank you, Mr. Cobb. Any discussion on this one? I guess, Mayor, you brought this one up. Do you want to kick us off?
Well, much as I love the idea of a grid, we already vacated the portion of this right-of-way on the north side of Geneva Drive, and it's only maybe a hundred feet to go around the corner. So this gives an opportunity for something that is a little bit more contiguous and lets the properties that in this area are kind of small have just a little extra room to be able to do something productive.
Councilmember Ott.
Yeah, so we talked about this earlier today, and it occurs to me, looking at the the Google map here, that the is the north of thirty-four A, is that not all the way to Nursery Street? No, it doesn't go all the way.
No, it doesn't go all the way to Nursery Street.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking farther over. I'm sorry. Okay. Additionally, it's also unclear from the the satellite. Looks like B zero comes farther south than like thirty-three A does where the lot line is. I guess I should say it looks like the right-of-way goes farther north below thirty-three A than it does on B zero. Is that? That's not the road.
But what we looked at, if you're talking about like up there below where it says plus minus twenty-four feet.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
That what we determined was that was part of the Franklin Street right-of-way, and so we figured that it would not be wise to vacate that part of Franklin Street is what we looked at. And that's why we we cut it. We aligned it with the south property line of thirty-three A because that, as it said, it would still we didn't look at it as part of that right-of-way. We looked at it as part of Franklin Street, of the Franklin Street right-of-way.
Okay. But Franklin Street's right-of-way goes farther north east of B zero?
Yes. Yeah, that it's very interesting that that in the the part that the Frank the east Franklin Street adjacent to B is roughly twenty-five feet in width, and then Franklin Street east of B there at thirty-three A is fifty feet in width.
Is that little gray line kind of in the middle of that right-of-way area? Is that the edge of the road? Is that what that's depicting?
As far as.
That says Franklin Street? So there's a line right through the word?
I'm not really sure.
The little Franklin Street?
Yeah, I'm not really sure if that is if that's the center line of the road or if that's what that really depicts, to be honest with you.
And that's obviously not a survey. That's just the parcel ID map.
Right. The property appraiser's website with the area overlaid on it. Those aren't always perfect by any stretch. They don't always line up, but that line doesn't doesn't appear to sync up with any one exact thing.
Okay. Thank you.
It just kind of cuts across the different things.
Quinn.
Go ahead.
It doesn't seem reflective of the center line.
When you said something about connecting it north and making a grid.
So there was a question, I can't remember if you were already sitting up here, but it was to to the north of this, there was a request to vacate land immediately adjacent to the Smithville County Library. So if you were to follow this proposed vacated right-of-way across to the north side of Geneva Drive, that was already vacated because the lots were too small, and the owner asked and applied for it. But it was it's the same deal on the other side. It made a bunch of triangles, and it was really difficult to work with the area.
The one the one last year?
Yes.
So I think the one last year was an east-west chunk on Godwin Street, right?
I think it was north, south, and east-west. It was like all around both of those triangles.
It was?
It was.
Oh, okay. Because, yeah, I don't see anywhere where this could connect and make.
No, it can't it can't make a grid. No, there's nothing there.
That makes sense. The only thing I had thought that that was potentially for was for perhaps making a right turn coming east on Franklin or sorry, west on east Franklin, and you wanted to turn and go east on four twenty-six. You would perhaps turn north on this piece and then turn on four twenty-six. But.
Still there.
I went and like looked at it, and it doesn't seem like it's too burdensome to to make the right just off east Franklin Street where it is. So.
Have any further questions?
No.
All right. Councilmember Britton?
I'm good.
Councilmember Rodford?
So the property owner of A dot zero is not asking for this. Is that correct?
Correct.
None of the property owners are asking for this. Is that correct?
Yes, we have. We do not have any applications.
We do not have any application for this.
Well, you brought it up. So what's the impetus?
Well, the the property owner has rented it to somebody who would like it to happen, but that person does not have the ability to apply because it's a rental situation versus an ownership situation. So I think we all know that this is where Brisket's barbecue is, and it's a it's a tight squeeze over there.
I don't know. I'm not for it, but.
Did we ask briskets to come on out today? Because I think at the last meeting I asked if we'd get them out here to see if they would support this or not.
They are not here. I did not tip them off.
We didn't ask. One of the things that we looked at is that if we were to go forward, our code does require us to notify all property owners adjacent to the to the right-of-way, and we would have done the notification then. We have to give them at least ten days' notice so that they can be here and provide input.
Okay. As far as concerns from the city's end, I mean, you talk about turning right. I probably leave that area more than like anybody on the entire street. I don't go that way. I go up Kimball Street. It just makes it easier. So I'm not worried about that. The only thing I could consider is if in the future we want to change the traffic pattern there, but I don't know how that sliver would help us out. So, Mr. Cobb, is there any concern from staff on needing this in the future for any reason?
I couldn't see it myself, and I know when Mr. Ott and I got together today, we actually looked at the mobility plan, and from a perspective that we I didn't see it. I could not see a need for it even long range. And we have there are plans for Franklin Street, but none of them involve widening it, and.
And even then, we kept that.
Right. It's mostly complete streets, and it's mostly trying to make the connections over to Lake Jessup and then over to Lockwood. So there wasn't really anything in the mobility plan that called for utilizing this right-of-way.
Okay. Well, I guess if we have no use for it, there's also no reason to keep it, so.
So what exactly is the right-of-way along Franklin Street? Is it that little sliver? Or is there?
Well, the Franklin Street, and I don't know, Mr. Kelly, can you pull your mouse up there? I don't have my pointer, so I can't that. But if you look where he is right now, that's that's the Franklin Street right-of-way, and if you go down, then he goes to the south and then go to the west. That's the north edge of the Franklin Street right-of-way. Of course, the the south edge is down is runs is the gray line running down below there, so that would be the Franklin Street right-of-way there.
Okay. So it's not much when you get to Geneva Drive.
It's roughly from what I could tell, it's roughly twenty-five feet in that area, and then when it gets east of B, then you jump to the fifty-foot right-of-way, which is our standard.
Oh, so there's a twenty-five. Okay. All right.
Okay. Any further questions? I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Well, is it even a roll? It's sort of a discussion. I guess we need to bring it back.
Do we need to vote on this or just give you?
I just need direction whether or not if you want us to initiate the right-of-way vacation is what I need to know.
Okay. Why don't we just go down the line?
I think so, yes.
Councilmember Ott?
I think we can initiate it, but it'd be good to hear from the property owners what they think about it, but I mean, they'll they'll be noticed. So I guess so.
Councilmember Britton?
Yeah, let's we can go forward, but you know, I reserve the right to change my mind.
Sure. Councilmember Rodford?
No. I'm not for it.
Okay. I would also like, you know, to get some input from the owners, but I guess you have direction to move forward.
We'll we'll initiate the process, and first thing we gotta do is we gotta get sketch and description because we've got to be able to describe it in the resolution, and then we'll do the ten-day notification and then get it on the council agenda.
Okay. And then when it's on council agenda, we notify the owners and they can come out at that point.
Yeah, we have to give them at least ten days' notice.
Okay. Perfect. All right. We will move on to the city manager's report.
I have no report, Deputy Mayor.
The city attorney's report.
I have no report.
I'm going to keep fishing here. Councilmember Ott?
Well, I guess if we have no use for it, there's also no reason to keep it, so.
So what, what exactly is the right-of-way along Franklin Street? Is it that little sliver, or is there?
Well, the Franklin Street, and I don't know, Ms. Kelly, can you pull your mouse up there? I, I don't have my pointer, so I can't, but if you look where he is right now, that's, that's the Franklin Street right-of-way, and if you go down, then he goes to the south and then go to the west, that's the north edge of the Franklin Street right-of-way. Of course, the, the south edge is, down, runs, is the gray line running down below there, so that would be the Franklin Street right-of-way there.
So it's not much when you get to Geneva Drive?
It's roughly, from what I could tell, it's roughly twenty-five feet in that area, and then when it gets east of B, then you jump to the fifty-foot right-of-way, which is our standard.
Oh, so there's a twenty-five, okay, all right.
Okay, any further questions? I'll ask the clerk to call a roll.
Well, is it even a roll? It's sort of a discussion. I guess we need to bring it back.
Do we need to vote on this, or just give you?
I just need direction.
Later, yes.
Whether or not if you want us to initiate the right-of-way vacation is what I need to know.
Okay, why don't we just go down the line?
I, I think so, yes.
Councilmember Ott?
I think we can initiate it, but it'd be good to hear from the property owners, what they think about it, but, I mean, they'll, they'll be noticed, so, I guess so.
Councilmember Britton?
Yeah, let's, we can go forward, but, you know, I reserve the right to change my mind.
Sure. Councilmember Botterford?
No. I'm not for it.
Um, I would also like, you know, to get some input from the owners, but I guess you have direction to move forward.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll initiate the process, and first thing we gotta do is we gotta get sketch and description, because we gotta be able to describe it in the resolution, and then we'll do the ten-day notification and then get it on the council agenda.
Okay. And then when it's on council agenda, we notify the owners and they can come out at that point.
Yeah, we, yeah, we have to give them at least ten days' notice.
Okay, perfect. All right, we will move on to the city manager's report.
I have no report, Deputy Mayor.
The city attorney's report.
I have no report.
I'm gonna keep fishing here. Councilmember Ott?
Well, we had Oktoberfest the other week, and it was, it was a great festival, so thanks for, Parks and Rec for, for putting that on, and I think that's about all I got.
All right, Councilmember Botterford?
Yes, I concur. Great job, Mr. Belton, on, on the event, and I know we got Park and Brew coming up the first of November, so always a great event for us as well, so your team did a great job, everybody seemed very happy and festive, so, nice, nice job there, so, good job. That's all I got.
All right, Councilmember Britton?
Dito.
All right, I, I'll, I'll have a report.
Uh, I went to Calno last Wednesday, and it was at Seminole State, their main campus, and they went over their future master plan that they have to do every five or ten years. So, I mean, they were, it was a wish list, it wasn't all funded, they stressed that, but all the campuses they have, they showed what kind of their dream vision was, but it was interesting for the Oviedo campus, they were really focused less on building more buildings and more on kind of tapping into the ecological area around it, so it was more looking into the trails, maybe doing some education on the ecology over there, and then a couple things to extend campus, but it was, it was pretty cool, if you can get a, your hands on one of those master plans, it's interesting to see where they're going, and they are above enrollment numbers from pre-COVID, so they're doing pretty well as well. Scout, I don't know if we've brought that up out here, I think maybe you have, but Scout's rolling out by October fifteenth, so that's the affordable ride share that the county's putting together, they have like thirty to forty drivers already, so later this month, it's a really affordable way to get around town. I have a feeling it's gonna be very popular, because if you go through three zones, which is like the max, it's like twelve to fourteen dollars to go from here to Altamont, and if you're a senior, it's half, and if you're on disability, it's a dollar a ride, so it should be a really good program when it gets up and running, but I think you'll need some patience at the beginning. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is, we all got some meetings about the Chamber of Commerce, and they weren't between me, they were between the mayor and the chamber, and I just wanted to get some clarification on, on things we vote on, so like, we voted on giving ten thousand dollars to the Taste of Oviedo in the chamber, and then I'm reading these emails that's saying we're asking them to ask for that back, and I'm, I just want clarification on if we as a council make a decision to do something, why are we going behind and then asking them to give it back?
Okay, well, I, I was not asking them on behalf of everybody, they said, what will make you happy, and I said, I'd love you to give the money back, so that is what would make me personally not be frustrated with their level of intensity in Oviedo. So us giving them fifteen thousand dollars a year when we have a ribbon cutting coming up on Wednesday that they didn't tell anybody about, the business owner sent me an email and said, hey, are you coming, and I'm thinking, where can I find this? I looked on the chambers thing, it's not there, I, there's, it's not on their social media, it's not on their calendar, they didn't send it in their email this Monday, like, they're just not doing anything, so for us to just keep on giving money without any oversight or thoughtful discussion on our end, I think is, it's frustrating me, but, you know, if that, you know, that is the default, and I made it clear that unless they choose not to take the money, then they get to have it, so that is, that is where it's at, and then of course they're gonna choose to take the money, that's, why would you not? If you can take the money and not produce a quality event, like, of course you'd do that.
Well, I can understand if you have a different opinion than the other people up here, but I do think as the mayor of the city, when you were talking to someone as a board that we approve something for, it did feel like reading that, that we are going back and saying, you need to give it back, and it, it felt like as the representative of this board, it, it was us, so it, and I know talking to, like, I got a call from them, and they felt like they were being told to do that, so we need to be really clear that if we're going out saying we have an opinion that differs from the board, this is not a requirement from council, they don't have to take action on it, it needs to be in this chamber if we're gonna be changing what we agreed to do.
Absolutely.
That's all I wanna put out there and clear up, but that's all I have on that, so it is up to your report.
All right. Nobody mentioned the Hagerty-Oviedo game yet, so appreciate everybody coming out for that, it was a really good game, it was not a blowout, but in the end, Oviedo did prevail, so go Lions. I, I am an alumni, alumnus, alumna, I don't know how we do the Latin of that, so it is nice that it goes back to the Lions. And thumbs up on Oktoberfest, that was fabulous, we had a lot of guests from out of town, and it ended up being a really interesting event with the variety of people. Coming up, October eleventh, this Saturday at eight AM, I hope all of you will consider swinging by Flakes and Fables, that is the next Eat Oviedo, I want to say it's number one hundred fifty-nine or so, so I'm still working through eating at every single restaurant in Oviedo City Limits, and that is the next one. And coming up on October eighteenth is the Bike Rodeo at Stenstrom, whether or not kids go there, all elementary kids, and I believe this is correct, Chief, and, and let me know if I'm not, all elementary kids are invited to this, so my, my lot and kid's gonna be, go into that. And the last thing I had on my list was that there is in fact a ribbon cutting on Wednesday, October eighth, at five thirty PM for Young Chefs Academy. This is allegedly being hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, but I can find no trace of it in any of their websites or online or anywhere.
I got an email on it, it's on my calendar.
You did? Okay, well, I, I do know that they have asked me to stop attending these because they don't like me, but I, I do plan to attend anyway, so I'm glad that the owners are directly inviting me to things, even though the chamber leadership is purposefully attempting to not let me know when these things are.
I think the email goes out to everyone, I read it.
Goes out to the chamber members.
Oh, I, I get those too, I missed that there was a ribbon cutting somehow, so, all right, that's all I've got.
And I don't know if anybody brought up National Night Out, that's tomorrow.
Yeah.
That is tomorrow.
So, that's a good event every year, and it's a fun one, so I think it's at six, seven, seven PM?
Six.
Six PM.
Six to eight.
Six to eight, there we go.
And the foundation will be handing out hot dogs and chips and water.
There you go, hot dogs, chips, water, and fun time. Is there anything else as far as reports? We will go on to future meeting dates. Monday, October twentieth, at six thirty PM, we have a regular session. Monday, October twenty-seventh, at five thirty PM, we have a work session, yes we do, and Monday, November third, at six thirty PM, we have a regular session. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
No CRA meeting?
We, we will have CRA meeting.
What's that?
On. On the twentieth.
Twentieth, okay.
And a CRA meeting on the twentieth, starting at six o'clock. It is six fifty-three PM, and this meeting is adjourned.